I'd like to call Monday, May 15th, 2017, City Council Meeting to Order. Please call the roll.
Alderman Sandy?
Here.
Alderman Glad?
Here.
Alderman Schaefer? Oh, Alderman Curry?
Here.
Alderman Mahavik?
Here.
Alderman Devine?
Here.
Alderman Caddick?
Here.
Please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City of McHenry mission statement reads as follows. The City of McHenry is dedicated to providing its citizens, businesses, and visitors with the highest quality of programs and services and a customer-oriented, efficient, and fiscally responsible mayor. It is my honor to present my first mayoral proclamation to Public Works. It reads as follows. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support and understanding of informed citizenry -- citizens is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, workers, and employees, whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated person -- personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Wayne S. Jet, Mayor of the City of McHenry, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through May 27th, 2017, as Public Works Week in the City of McHenry. I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint -- to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing public work services to all in the community, and to recognize the contributions that public works officials and workers make every day to the health, safety, comfort, and quality of life in the McHenry community. I would like to recognize John Schmidt, Director of Public Works, and I'd like you to go ahead and introduce who's here tonight.
Okay. Nancy Lurk is our administrative assistant, and Troy Strange is our project engineer. Scott Schueta is our street division superintendent. Andy Lechner is our crew leader in the street division. Dale Maltz is a crew leader in the street division. Mike Harper is a crew leader in the street division on the Forest Street. And Pedro Padro is a street division maintenance worker. I'd like to recognize Matt Rogers, who's our McHenry mascot. Utility superintendent Steve Wirth. Waste water superintendent Russell Resickton. And assistant wastewater superintendent Russell Flaherty. I got everybody? All right, great. Thank you guys for coming.
I want to thank you all for what you do for the City of McHenry, and it's greatly appreciated. So, thank you. If you would like to go ahead and leave, you're more than welcome to leave. You have every right to go on your side. I'm not getting mad.
Don't get mad.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Take care, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public comment portion. We welcome public comments to all -- at all City Council meetings. Any member of the public wishing to address the council is invited to do so by stepping to the podium and providing their name for the public record. The public may -- the public may comment now for items not included on tonight's agenda, and then will be offered the opportunity to comment on an agenda item throughout the meeting. While the City Council cannot discuss items that are not posted on the agenda, where appropriate, your comments will be acknowledged and addressed. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to make a public comment that's not on the agenda tonight? I see none. The first order of business is a consent agenda consisting of items 7A through 7P and is voted on as a whole unless anyone would like to remove an item for discussion purposes or to be voted on separately. Does anyone have an item that they wish to be removed or any discussion prior? Scott?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item A, E, and F.
Okay. Any others?
I said a question about item F.
F as well? Okay. I am looking for a motion to approve E, C, D, and then G through P. Alderman Glad?
So good.
And Alderman Curry?
Second.
Any more discussion regarding those items?
Not on those items, don't.
Alderman Curry?
Nothing.
Alderman Mahavik?
Nothing.
Alderman Devine? Alderman Santee? I have no questions. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
All right. The next item on the agenda is 7A. Looking for a motion to -- actually, I'm looking for a discussion on this item for 7A, sorry. Alderman Curry?
Yeah, a couple of things on this item. I guess I made a couple of notes here. I guess I, you know, kind of rhetorical question at this point, but I'm wondering why this item did not come before Finance Committee need to be discussed. You know, I've been on the Finance Committee, and I'm not even aware what some of this one bank actually is, this PMA Financial Network. So, I'm just a little surprised it didn't go before Finance Committee. I have a couple of questions to comment on this. I guess I'm curious as to why we have eight banks involved with our funds. It seems like a lot.
These are any banks that we've been involved with. We have investments with multiple banks in the area. Whoever's going to have the best interest rate for our funds.
So, we have actually -- we actually have funds at all end of these facilities?
Currently, we -- I think there's only one we do not right now.
And what, PMA Financial, I guess I'm not familiar with that. What is that?
They deal with Harris Bank. They do -- they've done like our cash analysis for us to do, be able to invest money from a day-to-day basis versus month-to-month. They'll look at how your cash flows go in and out, and then tell you what you can invest on a daily basis. So, they work for us to get better interest rates.
All right. And then I comment, sort of comment question. I see the signatories here. We have the Mayor, the City Administrator, and the Treasurer. And I guess my question really, it's probably been that way, but my question is, shouldn't we really have two elected officials involved in this? At this point, we have, and again, it's no reflection on any individuals. It's just a matter of process that we have effectively Mayor and two people who, for all intents and purposes, work for the Mayor, is signatories on the bank funds. And I guess, just as a question of process, again, it's not a reflection on anybody, any individual, but as a question of process, shouldn't we, I guess, have a couple of elected officials? And I guess I would suggest the Mayor, the Clerk, and the Treasurer.
Yeah, it could be, right, I could talk to you a little bit about the evolution of it. Some council members may remember, a couple of city clerks ago, it was more of a full-time position here, and so the person was around all the time, and it was actually the collector. I mean, if you look in the city code, I think they actually call it the collector. And so, a couple of years ago, the Treasurer and the Finance Director position was consolidated and/or created. So, that's probably some of the background to it. Of course, we're not opposed to having another elected official. It's identifying who that would be. And it certainly could be the city clerk as it used to be. You know, it's really whoever council wants it to be.
And so, it used to be the clerk, is that your --
Yeah.
Yes. It was the city clerk, was added before.
And again, that evolved on the fact that --
So, were there three, or were there four then?
There were four.
There were four.
There were four then, all right. Because it takes just two, right, to do the fund transfers or whatever? How often do we have to do that?
Well, we write checks every day, pretty much. Well, once a week, twice a week, yes.
So, these, the signatories own the checks themselves, then?
Correct.
Which you need somebody who's available. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Looking for a motion to approve 7A. Alderman Condon?
I would make that motion.
And Alderman Santee?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Caddick?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item for discussion is 7E. I believe this is Curry, Alderman Curry as well. Would you like to discuss another?
Sure. I guess it states in here that one of these vehicles, I'm not sure which one, I'm guessing it's one of the larger utility vehicles, is to be offered to the Public Works.
Yeah, it's one of our older squad cars, 317. That's on Mark's squad car.
Okay. And I guess I, I'm just struggling a little bit with, when we replace vehicles, and I'll have the same question on the next vehicle question, is we replace them, and we state in here that they're being replaced because they're out of date or beyond their service life, and yet, and presumably, when you operate a fleet, presumably, you do that so that to avoid excessive maintenance costs down the line. I mean, that's generally why you do that. So, if all these vehicles need to be replaced because they're either at their end of life or they're currently having excessive maintenance costs, I guess the first question would be, why would we want to keep one of these and move it into another department only to take all those maintenance costs that we're trying to avoid by replacing them?
We have to have our squad cars around 24/7. It's a different, you know, we feel it being used here. Our fleet replacement plan is we take them from the squad, we give them to a specialty unit, then it goes down to our school resource officer, looking at the wear and tear it has and the maintenance record. We don't think, we think it is still a serviceable vehicle, but not as a squad vehicle.
Okay. Is Public Works interested in this vehicle?
Yeah, I have vehicles at our higher maintenance, and this car will be, so I plan on getting rid of one of our higher --
Okay, so that was my final question, was are we eliminating a vehicle by doing this?
Yes.
At the end of the line?
Yes. Thank you.
And this kind of plays into the discussion we had, finance and personnel, when we talked about the budget is of new vehicles, new vehicles in the budget, even as replacement vehicles. And so, kind of the new angle on it is, where we can, let's pass vehicles down the line, where we need them, to the point that they just can't be serviceable anymore to us, and then get rid of them instead of, instead of requesting a new vehicle.
Right. And I actually have no concern with that. My concern was it didn't state in here that we would retire a vehicle.
Sure, okay.
So, my concern was not increasing the fleet. So, and I'll just preface it, I'll have the same question when we talk about the hook truck as well. Thank you.
I just had a quick question on the vehicle that we're transferring over, the mileage on that one?
Michael, we even had about 95,000 miles on it.
Yeah, and but, and I was thinking the same thing. I was just wondering if we were adding, like, going one extra on the fleet, but we're staying at the same number total fleet?
Yeah, and the mechanic, Matt, you know, he's the one who services all the vehicles. We're always in communication with each other to see where we can use them the best instead of just auctioning them.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Alderman?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, you know, although 95,000 sounds like a lot of vehicle miles, but we used to replace vehicles at 95,000, you know, five, six, seven, eight years ago, and, you know, times change, and vehicles are made a little bit differently nowadays, and they're made for longer, larger amount of mileage. And I think, if nothing else, I think down the road, we should probably have Finance look at that policy of replacement vehicles and see if we're jumping the gun a little too quickly on them.
And that's the one with the least one miles. The ones are actually getting rid of that 125,000, 135,000 miles, and they've had a long history of mechanical problems.
I can remember having an old Z89 years back and traded it in, because I said, oh, jeez, went over 100,000 miles, it went to 103, and then traded it in, bought a new Lumina over Gary Lang, and then about three, four months later, I read this article of the 300,000 miles automobile engine that that vehicle had. Always think to my, to this day of whether or not I traded it in and jumped the gun way too soon on it. So, like I said, if nothing else, we ought to redo that policy every now and then anyway, whether it be for the Police Department, Public Works, or whatever.
Any other discussion? I am looking for a motion to approve 7E. Alderman Glad?
So good.
And second?
Second.
Alderman Santee? Oh, second. Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Caddick?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 7F. Would you like to start it off?
Well, it's just the same question, so I guess, like, you know, are we increasing the fleet, and if it's, again, the high maintenance costs, what are we doing here?
Yeah, this is a total different scenario. With the new addition that we're putting on to the sewer plant at the south, wastewater treatment plant, we're no longer going to be able to utilize the 10-wheelers with the high boxes. We're having level rollers installed in our process, where you put a dumpster underneath, and this equipment runs 24/7, and it automatically loads these dumpsters and levels it as it does it. Well, that's the reason we need the hook truck. And then, the truck that we're taking down to the street division will eventually replace our wing truck.
Okay, so again, we're going to replace another --
Eventually, not right away, because it needs quite a bit of modification to do that, but that's our thought.
All right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Alderman Glad?
John, I saw a question about the bidding on that with the Lake County Department of Transportation, joint purchasing agreement. They go out and bid for us on that? Is that why there was a one win?
Yeah, they have an agreement in place in Peterbilt. They go out early, and Peterbilt got their, all their bids, so we just piggybacked onto that. So, it was competitive to bid by Lake County.
Okay. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, I was just going to ask what fund that comes out of?
That comes out of the water sewer fund. I think we're paying for this out of some reserve.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Looking for a motion to approve 7F. Curry?
I'll make that motion as presented.
Second? Alderman Devine? Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Caddick?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve a resolution establishing an Honored Street Sign dedicated for the intersection of Riverside Drive and Broad Street as honorary Donald Howard Way, as recommended by Public Works Committee. Prior to council consideration of this item, is there a member in the public that would like to comment on this item? See none? Is there any discussion from council on this item at all?
I'll just make the point that I think this is well-deserved. Our Honorary Street Programs were initiated a few years back so that we were able to recognize some of the citizens in our community that have made an impact on both the past and the future as it has developed of our community, and I think Mr. Howard certainly fits that description, so.
Any other? Alderman Glad?
I was just going to say, what we've read and everything else, and those that know, basically, helped lead up the town and stated the business. So, with Don's clients, and I think, you know, people like that, that for how many years, did so many different things, and never got really publicly announced or recognized for a lot of the things he did, it's nice to see him being able to do that here in council at this time.
I agree. Anyone else? I'm looking for a motion to approve this item. Alderman Santee?
I'll make the motion to approve the item for Honorable Street Sign to Donald Howard as presented.
Second? Alderman Glad?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Caddick?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the transfer of Class F-2-1 liquor license to Mohini Incorporated, DBA Shamrock Convenient Food and Liquor, located at 4105 Shamrock Lane.
Thank you, Mayor Stas, presenting a request to make this transfer from a peer mother doing business at Shamrock Convenient Food and Liquor located at 4105 Shamrock, which is in the Liberty Square Retail Center, to Mr. Raffi, President of Mohini Inc. Thank you.
I'd like to make a statement here. I actually met with the new owners of this location. They're closing tonight. Mr. Raffi and his daughter, they own a business in Waukegan, they've owned it for seven years. They have no liquor violations. Great people, and it's nice to have them in McHenry. So, I am looking for any discussion on this item. Any council? Any discussion? I'm looking for a motion on this item to approve. Alderman Condon?
I would make the motion to approve the transfer of the Class F-2-1 liquor license to Mohini Incorporated, doing business at Shamrock Convenience Food and Liquor located at 4105 Shamrock Lane.
Thank you. Looking for a second? Alderman Curry?
Second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee?
Yes.
Alderman Glad?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Caddick?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a motion to award bid for construction and installation of the boat launch at Charles Miller Riverfront Park to RE Hummel Construction Company Incorporated for the base bid of $207,161 and $80 cents, and include the recommended alternates for $19,723, for a total contract amount of $226,884.80. Prior to council consideration of this item, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? See none? Is there any council discussion on this item? Alderman Curry?
Yeah, I have a question. I guess we go to whoever possibly is our green, but when I look at the bids and the spreadsheet that's provided that shows the costs for the total cost, we've got three people who bid, Hummel, Swodurski, and Alliance. And if you look at that spreadsheet, and you look at the far bottom right corner, we obviously have a problem with what's being reported here. We're showing Aqua Fence, which is about $16,000, $17,000 for most of them, and for Alliance, we have a unit cost of $656,000, and a total cost of $656,000, and then a total for their line item, their column, of $1 million. And I guess it's probably pretty obvious that there's a error here, that's correct.
I can just, I mean, during the bid process, I did get a call from Alliance contractors after they looked through our plans and specs, and he was getting prices for this Aqua Fence. He indicated that he reached out to the company that's actually called Aqua Fence, and whatever he described to them, he got this quote back from them. It was kind of a last-minute thing. I had never seen a price like that. I tried to ask him, what were you asking, you know, for? He's like, oh, well, it was on the plans. Well, I went back and I did some research with the Fox Waterway Agency, who has recommended, you know, the type of fencing and stuff that they use, and we looked at the direction from the Army Corps and the Southern Water Conservation District as to what they recommended to be used at this. In both cases, we went back and looked at some bid prices, and actually, if you look at the other two bids, they're closer to the pricing that we had, you know, seen in the past. They're both a little bit higher than what we had. You know, we pulled some numbers from a bid that was from last fall. I'm not entirely sure where Alliance got their number across, but that was a true number from them, and that is why, basically, the day before the bid, I asked all three of these companies that were there, or I asked all the bidders that had plans, if they would put that item in the alternate bid, because there had been some last-minute question on it. Because we were awarding it based on the base bid, I didn't want there to be this ambiguous question about the silk fence. But like I said, once we went back and looked at everybody's numbers, and I called Hummel the day after the bid, and I reviewed with them the plans that we had, the spec that was required, and to make sure that he was on level with it, and he was right on top of it, said, this is exactly what I bid, this is the price that I have, I'm very confident with. Why the gentleman from Alliance got such an oddball number, I still, to this day, I'm not entirely sure what that is. That wasn't correct.
But he stuck by that when you talked to him? He stuck by that number when you talked to him?
He did.
A unit cost of $656,000 for $741,000?
Well, yeah, okay, the error is that it should be a lump sum number for that $656. I see that confusion. I had the cost broken out.
So, he quotes it as a lump sum, but he quoted it at --
Yeah, half a mil, over half a million dollars for a floating piece of silk fence, yes.
All right.
Which is why I pulled it out, and I wanted to look at his numbers from his base bid, which he still had, you know, unusually high numbers on some of the items, so I don't know if he didn't want the job or what, but.
No, I kind of thought it was an error in the spreadsheet, because it just leaps off the page, actually.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion? Alderman Glad?
So, we feel quite confident with Hummel? You can look at these bids, and I mean, nobody comes anywhere near him whatsoever, even if you corrected the fence, I mean.
Right, no, we have engineers in our office that have worked with Hummel before, they're a local contractor out of Island Lake. They've done other Public Works projects just recently. They did some golf courses out in Palatine, sheeting and dredging. One of our engineers that has worked with his father's company in the past 30 years doing sheeting, they've known Rob Hummel since then, competitors, obviously, but they know the quality of his work. The review costs, when I went through, we have several contractors that are sheet wall installation guys, that they're small, they don't like to do big Public Works, but they get the same material pricing. So, we called several of them to replicate what's the going rate on materials. We know production rates. I was surprised on the Swodurski bid, because they just did some work last fall. I figured with who they had shown on their team that they were going to be more competitive. Obviously, they had something else going on, and they were not as competitive on it, but we were very comfortable with Hummel's work and his bid prices.
Okay. Why would they? Any other discussion?
Just because I'm curious, I just noticed, on the alternates, like the top three items, you talk about galvanized, five gauge sheet steel. I'm just curious as to what the difference is, because on the alternate, it says five gauge sheet steel. I mean, what's --
Galvanized versus non-galvanized, when they galvanize the sheeting --
No, I know what galvanized is, but I guess my question is, so this is just mild steel sheet that we're going to go with rather than galvanized?
No, we're going with the galvanized. That's what we're recommending, yes.
All right, great, thank you.
Anyone else? I am looking for a motion to approve, a motion to award the bid for construction and installation of the -- and installation of the boat launch at Charles Miller Riverfront Park to RE Hummel Construction Company Incorporated for the base bid of two-hundred-and-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and eighty cents, and include the recommended alternates for nineteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars, for a total contract amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars and eighty cents. Alderman Curry?
I'll make the motion as you just read.
Second? Alderman Santini?
I will second the motion.
Any other discussion? Alderman Glav?
Yeah, maybe just for, we have a couple of new council members on the board, and everything since the solid process started, maybe staff, just to give a fast rendition of everything that's actually gone down as far as the amount of time we've had that boat ramp area, you know.
I'm not sure if there's a, there's a fast way to do that, but.
What the agreement that we finally came up with, though, so that our whole council understands that.
Absolutely, so it really is a project thirty years in the making, it's hard to, it's hard to believe that there is a project that's gone on that long. The Cliff Notes version of the whole project is, especially, basically back in nineteen eighty-nine, we were awarded a grant to be able to put the park in, put a boat ramp in. Through the course of that, the Army Corps began a study that led to a moratorium of boat launches on, in the Fox River Chain, unless you could identify one within that same waterway agency. We had tried a number of times to be able to do that. Fast forward, almost thirty years, twenty-nine years, and we ran into the Lake Moore-Johnsburg-McHenry County situation, where they were having a little bit of a disagreement about putting a boat ramp in. And we were able to speak to those entities and come to an intergovernmental agreement to be able to purchase that boat ramp from them, and then give their citizens the rights, same resident rights as McKenna residents would have to be able to utilize this boat ramp. And under all those circumstances, we were able to finally secure those rights, have that ramp verified through the Army Corps of Engineers, and sheet down this road. So it's been a project thirty years in the making, it's hard to believe. But we're excited to be able to offer this, and I can tell you that Fox Waterway and some of our local marinas are also excited for us to be able to have this amenities, increase access to the river themselves.
It's great history for thirty years.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santini?
Yes.
Alderman Glav?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Caddin?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item on the agenda is mayor's statements and reports. I would like to publicly say that I am in the process of working with the city administrator, Derek Moorfield, to revise future city council agendas in order to make them more informative and transparent, and to provide a greater opportunity for input and discussion by the city council, city administration, and public. Council will see these changes on the June fifth, two thousand and seventeen city council agendas. Thank you very much, and next item is committee reports.
We could say we'll have a Parks and Recreation Committee meeting tomorrow at four P.M. The agenda was included and hanging out, so I'm just in other specific notes out to all the council. This basic discussion is the focus group results from our community assessment.
Thank you. Staff report?
Anything else? I'd like to jump.
We have a cop on top raising money for Special Olympics occurring this Friday at the Dunkin' Donuts on one-twenty. It's a great event that we hold every year, hopefully you can combine artists.
What time is that?
Five A.M. to two P.M.
See, there are five?
No.
Go ahead, Bill.
Well, it's the time of year again, so all our, all of our events are gonna start kicking off. We have, Green Street Cruise Nights is gonna be the first one, so next Monday night at five P.M. we'll have a large amount of activity back down on Green Street and in that area, so we're excited for that to start. That same week, we'll have our first band concert, the high school will be having their band concert Thursday the twenty-fifth. That'll be at seven, seven P.M. instead of the normal seven-thirty. Also, before we meet again, we'll have our Memorial Day, obviously, our Memorial Day on the twenty-ninth at ten A.M. And another band concert, our first regular band concert, we, July, June first, at seven-thirty, with the regular shooting band. Oh, and then the last thing I have, if you haven't noticed, I will apologize, we did, we're having a rooftop unit issue. It has failed, and we're in the process of trying to gather some quotes to replace or repair that unit. So I apologize for the temperature here, we're kind of.
Thank you, Bill. Next item, future agenda items?
Well, this is a future agenda item, I would like to apologize to Director Schmidt and your staff, who were choking during your presentation, so please tell your staff it was no disrespect, and that I'm very happy to honor Public Works Week, so I apologize. I'm okay.
Yeah, it's nice to have you back.
Any other future agenda items? Alderman Curry?
First of all, glad you did the show.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, you know, we've had a lot of discussion, I know, with various aldermen and the mayor about our committee structures, and what I would propose is that we, we schedule a committee of the whole meeting for next Monday, the twenty-second, to discuss that item in terms of, I know there's, there's proposals on committee of the whole, rather than individual committees, and there's proposals on increasing the numbers of our committee members. And so I would propose a committee of the whole next Monday at seven P.M.
I am actually out of town for city business next Monday, so I was, I would, I would propose that we do it June fifth before the meeting, would you be okay with that?
Well, some people can't get here as early as others, but.
Yeah, if we were to postpone it an additional week, then there's no reason why we can't start our meeting at seven o'clock and then have our city council meeting afterwards. But we should, we should have it as soon as possible, I think. I would prefer to have it next Monday as well, and actually, if your council members wanted to have it next Monday, we could just schedule it, we could let you know what happened. But I'm willing to go an extra week, you know, again.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, so two.
An extra week, I mean, you know, as far as.
Yeah, so the next regular council meeting is June fifth, so you're saying seven o'clock on June fifth?
So we're talking.
It's Memorial Day, the weekend tomorrow.
We can actually.
We'll get something about that week.
So we're talking three weeks. I'd like to hear what anybody else might have to say about that one.
Sure.
Anyone else? If anybody else has a problem, it's for, oh, it's next Monday.
I, I know it's, after Memorial Day, I don't know what the possibility is for, you know, having something on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. Just bring it up.
I think it's here to June seventh.
Right, so rather than change your reg- if you change your regular meeting, hit the mouse, a special posting of rescheduling that meeting, unless you call it a special. You can cancel it, then you have a special meeting. What I would recommend is just put it on the agenda and be done with it, discuss it at the meeting.
We could add it, we could add, we could add to that agenda as like a discussion item, and have the same discussion.
You can put it in the end of all that?
Yeah.
Just kidding.
Alderman Curry?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe you can go into committee of the whole during a regular meeting. At any point in time.
Right, but if you have a regular meeting, what's the point? Meetings, meetings. You'll all be there anyway. You could do that if you want, we could craft it that way.
Alderman Condon?
I don't understand what the concern is about rushing this if, while there is a parks meeting. When did you say that is?
Tomorrow.
Okay, so that's already scheduled, but there's no other committee meetings that are scheduled before the June fifth meet, our council meeting, so I don't understand what that concern is. I schedule clients on, during the weeks, on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, unless it's, unless I know when it is, and because we didn't have a council meeting scheduled for next Monday, I actually scheduled a client, so, and I think it's, seems redundant to call it a committee of the whole, when it can be discussed and voted upon at a city council meeting as an agenda, I.
And it doesn't have to be voted on either, right? You can just talk about it.
Correct, you're correct, yeah. So I, I think it's, that's silly and redundant to, to not just have the discussion and consensus and move forward. But, but I certainly can't imagine having a meeting without the presence of the mayor.
Alderman Glav?
Yeah, again, reiteration for the whole council, if three members, and I'm not pushing this up, but I'm just saying, so that we have clarification, and that's the fact that whether the mayor's in town or not, if three aldermen decide to call a meeting, whatever day, it is legal and it is binding. And that is according to codes and statutes and everything else. And I, I just, again, for clarification, I have no problem with waiting for three weeks, okay? But then, again, to correct the attorney, he made the statement that we don't have to vote, and we do have to vote, because this also has to have, maybe not at that meeting, but we have to change our ordinances as well to reflect whatever we decide to do.
Yeah, the next meeting, the following meeting.
So, and again, there would be a motion, probably, that night to direct staff to create the ordinance as well. You know, so, but again, I, I would expedience, you know, we've talked about, boom, right from the get-go, get-going, and I think that's one of the issues that several of the council members have mentioned the fact that they would like to get resolved and get forward, and you sure you can't just reschedule?
Yeah, it's a city meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so let's just do June fifth and make it an agenda item for discussion, and, you know, make a motion to.
Discussion and direction.
Yeah, direction, and let's, let's go that route, since we're all here at that time anyway. And then the following meeting will look for a motion to approve.
Alderman Glav?
Yeah, on future agenda items, also, you mentioned as far as changes in our city council meeting as far as for transparency and everything else, that's fine and dandy, however, I'm sure a lot of, I know you've met with most of the aldermen in the last week or so, and I'm sure some of these ideas have come from that. But again, a lot of that, like, public input, this policy of the councils, created about two or three years before I ran, back in about ninety-four, ninety-five. And that policy is still intact today, and so what I would suggest is, possibly, you read at the beginning, if, unless we need to have discussion or whatever, but whatever changes are, they should probably, these policies should be approved by council before we go through that process. And I just, again, just so we get everything right, you know, and have it spelled out the way it should be, so.
And that's the whole thing, yeah, that's the whole thing, all right, let's not do it fast, let's do it right. So, I say let's do it June fifth, and we'll discuss it there, and provide staff the direction that council would like to go on that.
Fair enough. What we could do is provide a draft agenda with changes as another discussion item, and just have a discussion about it down in the direction like we are for the committees out of that, so.
Any other future agenda items? I am looking for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Alderman Santini?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second motion? Alderman Devine? Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santini?
Yes.
Alderman Glav?
Yes.
Alderman Curry?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Caddin?
Yes.
Thank you.